Well, it started with my wife stopping me three times before I got our door today, so that's alright. Absolutely. Again, good afternoon. My name is Seda Najad and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of March 18th. If you would, please call the roll.
Chairman Najad.
Yeah.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Jabar.
Present.
Commissioner Jabea.
Here.
Commissioner Javed. Absent. Commissioner Linton. Absent. Commissioner Macon.
Here.
Commissioner Noyola. Is absent. Commissioner Senegal. Absent. Alternate Commissioner Harris. Is absent. Alternate Commissioner Sorrell.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You have been sent the minutes of the previous meeting of February 26th. If there are no corrections or revisions, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition. The ayes have it. Thank you. And we're gonna get started with our first case of PZ 2024-12.
Good afternoon. Colby Bracken of Access Surveyors has requested approval of a replat of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, Block 3 of the Amelia Heights Third Edition into lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, Block 1 of the Ion Edition, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The intent of this plat is to increase the number of residential single-family lots from six existing lots into 10 residential lots. Staff recommends approval of the request. We did send 16 property owner notices. We received zero in favor and five in opposition. Those concerns were pertaining to mainly traffic and commercialization of the lots. In result of the five in opposition, this is more than 20%, so in order for this to pass, it would need a supermajority vote of commission. If it did not receive that, then it would fail. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. And this is the replat. So along Washington Boulevard, there will be six lots, and then along Montrose Street, there will be four. And I do believe that we have the applicant and possibly some property owners that would like to speak.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. And the applicant, Mr. Bracken, right? Good afternoon. How are you?
Doing well. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
My name is Colby Bracken with Access Surveyors. We're located at 11025 Old Both Road in Beaumont, Texas. For this replat here, we've worked hand-in-hand with the wonderful staff, our clients, and DD6 as well to ensure drainage is met, along with other standards of the subdivision regulations here in Beaumont. We're not creating any new streets. We'll be using the same utilities, so simple change of lot lines is what we're looking at here today.
Okay, and apparently all the lot sizes are complying with the city requirements, from what I see.
That is correct.
Alright. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna open the floor for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Sir, you wanted to say something? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Mike Labrie. I have the property to the left of that, and I don't know the address. But I just had a simple question.
Just give us your address at home or wherever you are.
The church is next to that. It's 7880 Washington, so I'm between there. I own that as well.
Good, thank you.
I didn't understand. Was it gonna be six lots on Washington? I'm trying to figure that out. I didn't get this in the mail, this layout.
Okay. Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Six lots on Washington?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
It must be very small lots. I mean, I'm just curious how that's gonna happen. Will they enclose the drainage district? I mean, the drainage ditch?
The drainage ditch is drawn on the map in here, and apparently they have the drainage ditch, and they also have the separation between the ditch and the property line.
Okay.
The easement.
And can you tell me how wide those lots are? Can you see that? I can't. I'm just curious.
Mr. Bracken, let's make this easy. Why don't you come up here for a second?
I guess the easiest part would be for the gentleman to pose all his questions and then give Mr. Bracken a chance to rebuttal, and if he needs to come back with additional questions.
So you need to know the lot sizes and what else?
This is just the first time I've seen this. If I could get a copy of this, that'd be great.
Perfect. I'll tell you what, we'll just give you a copy of that. What do you think?
That's fine.
Alright, have a great day. Yes, ma'am, you're next.
Can I have one too?
You can have one too. Anybody else? Mayor, you want one? No, he's got one. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, please, come on up. How are you today?
I'm fine. I'm Jane Fontno. I own the property to the, I guess you'd say, other side of Washington, right across the street from that.
Okay.
And
And your address, please?
7625 Washington. I own 7625B, 7623.
Okay.
And all the property across the street. That area is a curve, and there have been multiple accidents. I had two weeks ago coming out of Montrose, and I have the ditch. One of them's covered, one of them is not covered. And every year, about three or four accidents, they go through my yard or through the pasture. And Washington's supposed to have been widened, but it's not. It doesn't have shoulders, I mean, to speak of. And Montrose is a little bit more than a one-laner. I mean, it says it's two-lane, but with the people parking. So that intersection of Montrose and Washington is very dangerous. And there's wrecks on that road frequently. I've been there 35 years. And I had them go through multiple mailboxes every, you know, every year, at least one, if not two. And it's just that curve there. They don't show it on there, but there's a big curve. And I'm glad we leave the canal because that's the only canal that drains. It goes into a holding area on Montrose that drains. A few years back, Montrose flooded. All those houses, we didn't flood, but all those houses flooded, and I'm glad they're not doing anything with that canal because that is a major drain for all that. And to, that's a lot. The traffic on Washington is like Interstate 10 because it's the only thoroughfare through to hit Major and to hit I-10. And it's very, very busy, and there's a curve right there that just, and it just, I'm just saying. It's never been approved. There's not a light. There is a stop sign on Montrose, but I'm just, from experience, to tell you what's been going on there. And I'm not against buildup, but, and I'd also like to know, because I know the minimum on lots, you know, 100 and so many feet deep and 60 foot wide with the easements between the houses and all that, it doesn't, I'll have to look at the numbers. It doesn't look like it would be rather crammed with increasing traffic. Six lots would be great, but 10 is kinda over the top. But that's for y'all to decide. I just wanna let you know about the traffic, and I don't know what type of housing or anything they're thinking about putting there. But it's really, really busy.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. Mr. Bracken, you had some negative issues that came up, and I'd like for you to address those and start with the clearly defined the size of the lot, so the folks would know what we're doing.
Okay, so the minimum lot width for this zoning district is 50 feet. And even though that they're at an angle where we exceed 50 feet, but in the back, it shows the direct width of being 50 feet, which meet the minimum requirements for this zoning district, which is RS, single-family dwelling. As for the concern of visibility, I believe coming off of Montrose onto Washington Boulevard, we do have the minimum building setback lines of 25 feet off of Washington Boulevard, which I believe are put in place just for that reason, to ensure that visibility around a corner or at intersections of streets are met for the public safety.
And do you require any lighting in there, or that's city's issue?
I would like to say it's the city's, but because we're not necessarily creating new roads, as it sits today, we're not necessarily changing too much, other than the lots from six lots to 10 lots. There will be six lots off of Washington, but I believe the 25-foot building setback line off of that public road is the minimum requirement for this zoning district.
And is the sidewalks gonna be required?
We're not creating any new infrastructure, so sidewalks at this time are not, to my knowledge.
Alright.
Commissioner, if I may, the chairman, it's basically a replat, and so those aren't conditions that have been required if they weren't required in the original plat design when they were platted for six. Whatever conditions that were established at that time would be the same conditions that apply, but because it's just a replat, he's not responsible for new conditions, if you will.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Did I ask him all the questions that I needed to?
There was one about drainage, I believe?
Yes.
The DD6 ditch there, which is Jane's Gully, we worked, we went back and forth with DD6 to satisfy their requirements. We ended up with 20 feet off of the ditch top, the existing ditch top, which is the, I guess, the bold line along Jane's Gully. We do show the flood zone, the different flood zone, which is that hatched area, which is the actual floodway of Zone AE. But we've, like I said, we spoke with DD6, and they kinda settled on 20 feet outside the existing ditch top to allow for future construction or maintenance of their ditch.
Okay.
Correction to my previous statement. They're not responsible for, they're responsible for new conditions as it relates to the replat plating. So because they're adding additional lots, like I said, DD6 has some additional conditions to allow for drainage, for additional capacity. But whatever else the commission decides that's necessary because of the increase of the lots out there, if there's necessary, if staff is making recommendations or the commission has recommendations to make, or the board has recommendations to make because of the replat design, then those would be. But the original conditions as far as sidewalks and lighting probably would not have been proposed because it's not a new development.
Good. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bracken.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, so we've heard from the applicant. We also heard from some of the neighbors. They had some questions. And the city would give you guys some, the copy of the plats that we have, so before you leave off, make sure somebody will copy those for you. With that, I think we are closing the public comment, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve PZ 2024-12.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The ones that are aye, raise your hand, please. Any nays? And some of ours are abstaining from the voting. Thank you very much. The ayes have it.
For record-keeping purposes, we'll need to know what members are sustaining. Okay, so
Three of you guys.
Three are sustaining?
Yes. One, two, three, four.
So that would be Commissioner Jabar and Linton are sustaining.
And Jabar.
Jabar. I said Jabar. So you have that? And then it passed with the rest?
Good.
Mm-hmm.
Are we good? Thank you, ma'am. Alright, with that, we're gonna go to PZ 2021-243, please.
This would be the joint public hearing, so we'll need to
Yeah, way to go, Demi. But before we do that, you do have a full house, so if you want to, if we're gonna have some more abstentions, or if you feel necessary, you don't necessarily need an alternate, but that's completely at the discretion of the chair.
He's comfortable. Let him just sit here. Alright.
At this time, I need you to open the public hearing.
Alright, well, great. Thank you very much. We're gonna, we're done with the planning meeting, and now we're gonna open up the public meeting with the city council, and the Honorable Mayor West will get us started. Good afternoon to you, sir.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Potem Turner. Absent. Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Felschaw.
Present.
Councilmember Gatz. Is absent. Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel. Is absent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna get started with PZ 2021-243, please.
Scott Holloman and the heirs of AJ Fasulo Estate have requested the city of Beaumont to accept maintenance of the private drive east of West Calder Road and north of Baker Road and its infrastructure. The city adopted a process for the conversion of private streets and other infrastructure to public ownership and maintenance. During that process, in 2021, engineering conducted a survey and analysis of the streets and drainage infrastructure. They found that the entire pavement is in very poor condition and requires full rehabilitation. The ditches had been poorly maintained and not graded properly to drain with driveway culverts that were not set properly. The condition of the water and sewer lines were unknown. At the October 2021 Planning Commission meeting, after some discussion, the commission requested more thorough investigation of the drainage and water sewer situation and minimum improvements needed for acceptance of the neighborhood. In the following months, the engineering did investigate the requested data, and this is what they found should the city assume the street and infrastructures. Immediate needs are to replace the water system and improve fire protection and eliminate the multitude of services running from the extensive bank of winters in the West Calder right-of-way. The current cost estimate is $275,000 to install water mains, service connections, water meters, and fire hydrants through a contractor. Next, the city would need to set four manholes on the sanitary sewer system to provide access to the lines for inspection and cleaning. The estimated cost performed by a contractor is $40,000. Remaining work would be addressed during normal prioritization of scheduled workloads, which are excavation of roadside ditches, installing driveway culverts, rehabilitation of asphalt roads, and to replace the sewer main lines. This listed work will cost approximately $710,000. Altogether, the dedication and rehabilitation will cost approximately $1 million. This request was brought to Planning Commission in 2021 and was most recently tabled for six months at the September 18, 2023 Commission meeting, for the purpose of receiving additional information from the owner regarding private contractor costs and producing plans to bring the streets up to city infrastructure standards. Staff has not received any correspondence regarding the associated costs or plans from Mr. Holloman nor the heirs of AJ Fasulo Estates as of yet. At this time, staff recommends denial due to the following reasons: narrow width of the streets, which could hinder fire apparatus and solid waste services; lack of fire hydrants along the streets; load limit concerns; surveying issues; and rehabilitation costs. Should the commission choose to approve the request, staff would recommend the following condition, and that being, number one, a plat produced by a licensed surveyor that must be submitted to the planning office prior to final acceptance of the streets and infrastructure. We do have some, I'm sorry, Mr. Holloman did reach out, and he wasn't going to be able to be here today. He's out of town, so I believe he has some representatives on behalf of him. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is the private road that they wish to dedicate to the city. This is a picture of the entrance. This is a picture of the other side of the entrance. That's along West Calder. This is inside the streets. And then this is the water meters that are in the West Calder right-of-way. And again, I do believe that we have some representatives of this case here today.
Any questions? And who is the representative for? Good afternoon, sir. If you would, state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you for hearing from us today. My name is Kevin Atkins. I reside at 2411 West Calder Road in this housing addition. As you all know, we've been talking with you all for quite a while, and the final thing, from what I understand, for Mr. Holloman to obtain, was bids from independent contractors to come out and give us costs to redo the roads. We were, he was unsuccessful in finding any contractor willing to give us a bid to rehab these roads to city standards, simply because of the red tape involved with engineering studies that would be required, compaction studies that would be required, all the requirements that the city would need to make sure these roads are up to standards. In a nutshell, they said, "There's too many jobs out there right now where all they have to do is go lay asphalt." So we could not find anyone at all interested in our project. So that's where we're at with that.
Alright, and you do understand the cost estimate that the city has come up with, right?
Yes, sir, I sure do.
Alright.
I do know that, personally speaking, my wife has lived in that neighborhood for over 40 years and has paid taxes on residents in that neighborhood. And then whenever we chose to sell that house, actually, Scott Holloman bought it, and then we built a house over on the other road. And so our taxes, you know, we've been paying taxes, my wife has for 40-plus years, me for 16 years that we've been together, along with many other residents there in that neighborhood. And whereas we do receive city services, we do not receive any city maintenance for our tax dollars. So, you know, we asked that, you know, you could possibly approve this to move on to City Council today so they can take it into consideration. And we understand it's not gonna happen overnight. It is a significant cost, and we are a very small neighborhood, but we, as property owners, cannot afford this at all. And so we are reaching out to the city to ask for help.
I understand. Thank you, sir.
I've got some questions. So there are, what, 15 houses there? Fifteen?
Fully, yeah.
Fifteen, okay. And did y'all discuss with the city about sharing the cost, or at least coming forward with some finances to assist?
We have already spent several thousand dollars in survey work, that sort of stuff, providing, providing the city with information about the neighborhood. And yes, there's been some discussion, but not in detail about sharing the cost. I can tell you, well, things may have changed because two of the residents in that neighborhood, longtime residents, have passed away. And so the new, the current, one house has been sold, and that current owner might be able to afford to help chip in. The other one, the gentleman passed away just a few months ago, and the family's in the process of marketing the house right now. So that owner might be able to afford to help chip in too. But for right now, we haven't gone much further on that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question also. I think the last time that you all met, you did pretty much what was, kinda give a breakdown of what was prioritized for starting that development that you're looking for. And I see you have the water, the sewer, and then the roads. And one of the things was bringing back something that was most important to bring to them, which one seemed was more important because of the whole bill.
Oh, I can answer that right now. The number-one priority is the drainage. During Hurricane Harvey, we were, that's, we were living on our lot while we built our house. And I can tell you, from the LNVA canal to the furthest south property line in that neighborhood was flooded. Now, it was only a few inches in some spots, but in other spots, it was well over a foot. Pat Guidry, the house at 2415, it came within just a couple of inches of actually coming, whenever I say a couple of inches, it's lateral, not height-wise, of coming inside her home. It was in her garage. So, you know, given a good flood, you know, good rain and flooding, there will be houses that will flood in that neighborhood if we can't get help with the drainage. So, but our, you know, our primary is not necessarily the water and the sewer. They work fine, but it's getting the ditches cleaned down, so the neighborhood, and then we can start looking at everything else.
And y'all don't have an HOA, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought.
Okay. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir. This doesn't require a public hearing, from what I understand, does it?
Yes, sir, it does.
Good. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the applicant and also the staff. It is a problem that's not going away unless there's a lot of money involved. So with that, I would ask for a motion.
Well, I have really mixed feelings about this because I feel for the residents, but I make a motion that we deny filed PZ 2021-243.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Madam Attorney, is there any other communication that the city can do with the homeowners to kinda hold their hand and see where they can go with this? Because, you know, they've been here several times, and I'd like to be able to help them somehow.
If you're asking what their options are post-this board, this board does have, there is an appeals process that's outlined in our ordinance that the planning manager can provide to them. And so I'm treading very thin because I'm not, I'm giving advice to you. Make that clear for the record.
Sure.
Not legal advice to the applicant. But any decision that is made by the board is appealable. Any negative decision is appealable, and that information is available in our ordinance, but also can be provided to them upon requests by the planning manager. And I believe when they send out the denial letters, they do include that information as well as part of our due process protocol.
Yes, we do.
So in between now and then, if the neighbors come up with some kind of a finances, do they make another application?
So there's two options. They can appeal the decision through the due process process, right? Or, and that would, I think, not require an additional application fee because it's just part of the same appeals process. Or they could just start a new application to provide proof of funding and go back through the process. And I think that that would just be up to the neighbors and the applicant, what avenue they took. But it does, it does have a due process or appeals process for them.
Can we go back and waive the application fee or not?
You do not have that authority. So, application fees are based on the ordinance, and I believe there are only certain limited situations where the planning manager or the community development director has the ability to waive permit fees, and that's through council authority. But this board does not have that ability.
Okay, well, thank you.
But you can make that recommendation to council if you like. So yes, everything, um, goes before council, um, that comes out of the meeting, it still goes before council, that's kind of like the, because PNZ is not a, um, determinant board, PNZ makes, makes a recommendation to council, so when you see those, uh, that agenda item, it would say that it, it was denied by PNZ, um, we always write the, uh, ordinance or the resolution favorable, but we tell you that it was denied, uh, by PNZ, and so it'll be both in the staff report, um, that way, and so council does have an opportunity to review it at that time, because you have a final authority, so with they, their vote today was a recommendation to council, so their denial will go to you as a recommendation to review and to approve, and so you can accept or reject the recommendation.
Thank you, let's go to the next one, PZ two zero four three nine.
David Fenner of Dallin Road Church of Christ is rec, is requesting approval for a rezoning from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling to GCMD General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling for the property located at thirty-sixty North Dallin Road. The intent of the rezone is to streamline development processes, development procedures for any future expansion or reuse of the church. If the zoning district were to remain RS, a specific use permit would be required if the church intended to expand or reuse the building for other purposes. Furthermore, Dallin Road is categorized as a major arterial, and common planning practices do encourage commercial uses along such roadways. Staff, uh, recommends approval of the request, we did send out fifteen property owner notices, we received zero in favor, zero in opposition. The, on the screen, the area outlined in red is the area requesting the rezone. You can see, um, on this map that to the northwest and south is zoned as GCMD or GCMD two, um, and to the east is a large DD six canal, um, and then that abuts the estate, estates of Montclair. This is aerial, uh, image of the property. This is the subject property. To the south. To the east, that's the DD six ditch. To the west. And to the north, which is Tuscany Park. I believe we have, we don't have the applicant, um, present today, uh, oh, I'm sorry, we have the applicant present.
Okay, uh, so, what this means, that the, the owners can sell parts of this, uh, property to other businesses, right?
They could, um, but I'll go back to this real quick, so, they could, um, but most of it is developed as the church already, um, this is mainly to, you know, if they were to ever expand, um, possibly in that, uh, northwest, or, I'm sorry, northeast corner, um, it, it could necessitate a specific use permit, however, most of this area is already commercialized, um, so really trying to, uh, streamline their development process, um, to avoid have, the necessity of an SUP, should they want to expand.
But if they're gonna expand, they're, uh, they're a church anyway, so they can expand whatever they need to, right?
It, yes, however, if they were to expand, as it's zoned now, it's zoned-
They have to come back for a specific-
They would, and that's why they're requesting the rezone, so that they, they could avoid that situation if, if possible. So if they were to rezone to GCMD, which is what they've requested, um, a church is permitted outright, so there's no, there would be no, um, nothing compelling them to have to get a specific use permit.
Okay, let's see if they plan to expand. All right, the applicant's here, right? Uh, before that, anybody has a question for the staff? Nope, okay, go ahead, sir, good afternoon to you, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
I'm David Fenner, and, uh, thirty-sixty Dallin Road, Dallin Road Church of Christ.
Yes, sir.
So we are looking, uh, to rezone, as she has stated, uh, for any future development if need be, at this time, we do not plan to do any expansions at this time, but one thing in addition to that, they are doing expansions at Tuscany Park next door, and, what I've been told is, according to the city guidelines, and they're getting ready to build a Beaumont-Bona joint, joint there, and with them, with us being, with them being commercial and us residential, you have to have an eight-foot fence or barrier in between commercial and residential, we do not want that barrier, barrier in between, so that we felt like this was the time to come and try to get that switched, also, later on, if ever, you know, anything ever happened, whether it was an addition or, or to sell or whatever, we would be zoned commercial already, but we do not want the barrier between, uh, the commerce, because when the church was, the church building was built years and years ago, there was nothing out there, so the residential was no problem, because nobody knew whether it was gonna be commercial or residential, and so it's all become commercial at this point, so, we feel like we should go ahead and change it at this point, so that we don't have a, a wall in between us and Tuscany Park.
Good, thank you, that makes a lot of sense. Uh, I guess Bonin George is not as big of a secret as everybody thought, right?
Oh, well, I'm not supposed to let that go? I'm sorry.
Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much, sir, good to see you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? No one's volunteering, so we close the public hearing, we have heard from the staff, and also the gentleman from the owners, and, uh, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, and a second, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, good luck, sir. Okay, I think this is the last one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Twenty-four, no, I'm sorry, PZ two zero two four four two.
The City of Beaumont Planning Division requests approval to rezone fifty-eight ninety-five Laughin Drive from RS Residential Single Family Dwelling District to LI Light Industrial District. The northern half of this site is currently used as the city's landfill and is zoned as light industrial, while the southern half remains undeveloped and zoned residential single-family dwelling. Planning staff is recommending of, amending the zoning district of the city-owned properties to have a consistent zoning district and minimize any delays to future projects or expansions of the landfill. According to our comprehensive plan of Beaumont, the property is located within the designated landfill area, this request appears to, appears to align with the plan, and as such, planning staff recommends approval of the request. We did send out twenty-five property owner notices, we received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen outlined in red, that is the area that we wish to rezone, you can see to the north, that's the landfill and the wastewater treatment plant, um, we're requesting that we can keep that a consistent zoning all the way through. Um, at this time, we do have an oil and gas extraction project that is happening in the RS, uh, which is allowed per city ordinances, um, but that sparked this request, um, as, you know, as time goes on in the future, if the landfill ever did need to use that property, um, it would necessitate a rezone, so again, this is a request to streamline their development process, should that ever come up. This is, uh, aerial photography of the land, um, I couldn't get in there to take pictures, um, so I figured a, um, a larger picture may, uh, show the area intended to be rezoned. The City of Beaumont is here, if you guys have any, uh, questions of staff.
Any questions, folks? Nope, thank you. I guess she's speaking for the owner anyway, right?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, so now we open the floor for public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing, and with that, uh, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, we're at your mercy. Thank you, Demi, this was great, it's not even three forty-five. Your own record. Uh, this, Mrs.